...an even to order. With approval, can we amend the agenda so that these teams go first?
I make the motion that we amend the minutes and bring the students first.
Aye, second.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and start with our presentations. Mrs. Terry will kind of get those going for us.
So, let's start with our teacher recognition. We have a couple. The first is for starting the Zebra Block Fitness Program, and that's here at Tolliver, and that is for Katie Kennedy. Katie Keater. Yay! Yeah, you can come on up.
Okay. I just want to say a key word. So, when a teacher comes and says, "Hey, can I do something?" Actually, that usually means there's gonna be a lot of work and some, you know, heavy lifting. But Katie just wanted to have kids who have some attendance problems to come to the gym to do these fun workouts with her in the morning, and she targeted kids who have attendance that needed to be improved. And she paired them with some student leaders, and every morning at the gym, these kids are dying to get the rest of the student body out of the gym so they can do their Zebra Block. And I would say she's had a hundred percent improvement rate with her Zebra Block Fitness, so we certainly appreciate that, and I didn't have to do anything. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Coach Kennedy.
If you're not following the Tolliver Phys Ed Facebook page, may I recommend it? It is hilarious. You can see all the stuff that they're doing. Pretty impressive. Let's move to, looks like, some more students from Tolliver. Did you want to do that as well?
Alright, so the next students that... The next students I'm gonna recognize are students who improved or had the most growth in their winter fast break. So, that's our test is to see where, how much students have grown, and what they're learning, and all the things that we need to do to help them. And so, these are the students who improved the most overall. So, in second grade, the student with the most growth in reading was Grayson Rowe. And the student in third grade with the most growth in reading was Jayon Gradie. Come on down. And in fourth grade, it was Ozzaya Delaney. And the student in fifth grade with the most growth in reading was Gavin Finley.
Hold on to your mitts.
Just one more.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
We now have some students from Dammel High School that are being recognized tonight.
Hey, alright, so we are so excited to announce our students and recognize them tonight. Our first one is Lamont Darti. Darti? I'm sorry, sir? Dammel High. He got the McDonald's Black History Makers of Today Scholarship Award. So, if you've seen him, he's been interviewed by, what is it, Channel 27, WKYT. So, he is big time now. He's famous. So, we are very proud of Lamont. Also in our Rising Educators Program, so he is looking to get into music education. So, excited. We want to get him educated and get him back really quickly. So, Lamont.
Hold on to your mitts, Mr. Castle. I mean, this role.
Yes. I'm sorry. I always forget.
Find it out.
Alright, so as we start to try to revitalize our programs at Dammel High School since the pandemic, one of our focuses has been on our forensics team. And so, if you want to come up and ask you, we're really, really proud of the effort that our coaches are giving and trying to get our players back and competing. And we have three that did really well. Excellent at the Bluegrass Regional Tournament just, what was it, a week ago?
Yeah, two weeks ago, actually. So, we had Grace Haynes, June Wager, and Michaela McKenzie. And by competing in this regional tournament, all three of these students have qualified for the state forensics tournament. And then also, we have two other students who have qualified for the state tournament, and that is Kendall. And also, who's our fifth is, let's see, Kendall Carver and Chloe Streisit, who is Grace Haynes.
We couldn't be here this evening, but we just wanted to make sure we give them their recognition. So, we'll make sure we handle that at school.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll thank them.
Thank you.
Alright, so then we have a group that's here from the Education Foundation to tell us about grants.
Hello, I'm Dela Robinson. We're right here. We're here to present teacher grant awards. And the following teachers that have received grants this year are Shelley Engler, Toyota Tourist, camp field trips to Cleveland. Dammel High School, Darrell Riggmers is getting a grant to field trip to Campbellsville and the Blue Stand Project at ECU. Katie Newton, Admiral Perks, and Lois...
I can't answer that.
...Uttah Art Literary Magazine. For Mary Hogsitt, we have Amber Draper. Access to Communication, the Toby Gates. And Diana Oliver. Mark Peters for Student Observation and Heather Goode. Music Center, and from you, Anna Tolliver. She'll be getting a grant. Karen Tompkins for Sensory Logic Box. Total grants awarded this year is $3,288 in total. Congratulations.
Before we get started, let's say a pledge.
Hello, my name is Helen Levens, and I'm the Odyssey of the Mind coach for Tolliver. And we have some secondary graders here who are on the team. And Odyssey of the Mind, what we do is we have a problem, and I'm not there to teach them how to solve a problem. I'm there to teach them how to become problem solvers. And they have worked really hard. I just facilitate whatever they do, and they decide to do, and they bring in materials they find laying around the house. They may ask friends for materials, but they have to build whatever it is that they need to make. And they're gonna tell you a little bit about their problem. What is the problem?
That we found, that a paleontologist found a new discovery dinosaur. So, he built it and put it in a... In a parade, so the whole world can see.
So, what's special about this dinosaur that he discovered?
It can, it can walk on land, swim, and it can, it can also fly.
Alright, and so tell us about this parade.
For the parade, we made instruments and...
Amy, can you tell us about the instruments?
The instruments that we made, this is one of the examples. It's a guitar that we made for the parade.
What else is gonna be in the parade?
And me and Amy made a song for the parade. And we also had this picture, a painting of a plesiosaur.
And where does it live at?
It lives underwater, and it can only stay, it can only be in the water, and it eats fish.
And what is it, Hannah?
I'm a micro raptor, and it makes a screeching sound like this.
He worked really hard on his feathers.
For a long time.
And then they created this dinosaur. Can you tell them how you, the team, created this dinosaur? How did you decide that it was gonna look like this new creation?
We basically just took examples from every one of us, so everybody said what they wanted to do. So, then we automated into one big thing and made the dinosaur.
And what's your favorite part of the dinosaur?
The body that holds it together.
And what's your favorite part?
The color.
The color. Tell them. What's your favorite part? What do you like about the head so far?
I like where it has like a bunch of eyes.
Can you tell them about the teeth of our new dinosaur?
It has flat teeth, and it has sharp teeth, so it can eat grass and plants, and it can, and it can eat meat.
And what's it called?
Omnivore.
Omnivore. And we had to name, we had to name this dinosaur. How did you all decide how to name this?
We took a letter out of each of our names, and we named it Jarpasaurus.
Our competition is this Saturday. We start at 12 o'clock, our first part of the competition, and then we have a second part at 2:30. So, we're real excited about it. Thank you.
Good luck, Dela.
Long time ago, Mr. Boo was in OEM.
Alright, we're gonna move back to the beginning of our agenda, where we approve the meeting agenda of the board of members. So, starting in our new board members. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all so much.
I make the motion that we vote for the new board members. But I'm telling you, thanks for the board base facing.
Aye, second.
And approved and voted second. All of us say aye. Those who voted for Ms. Melinda Weathers, raise your hands. Four, four zero. And she is approved and unanimously by the board.
Alright, now we need to vote for a elect... Oh, I'm sorry. We have Ms. Sheila Lopner here, Ms. Sway, and Ms. Weathers.
In the Department of Education, constitutionally, the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Dammel Board of Education. According to law, and I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of the state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state, nor out of it, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so don't be glad. Aye, second.
Aye.
Melinda Weathers.
Melinda Weathers.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly affirm.
Subscribe and sworn to me this twentieth day of February 2023.
Do.
Melinda Weathers, sworn to me this twentieth day.
Sworn. Let's start it. So, I, Melinda Weathers.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
This twentieth day of February.
This twentieth day of February.
Twenty twenty three. Dammel Board of Education, Melinda Weathers, February 2023. The statute forty oath for school board members, KRS 160, 170, reads as follows. Every person elected to the Board of Education shall, before assuming the duties of his office, take the following oath in addition to the constitutional oath. State of Kentucky County of Board, Melinda Weathers, being legally sworn, says that she is eligible under the law to serve as a member of the Board of Education, and that she will not, while serving as a member of such Board, become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the Board, and that she will not in any way influence the hiring or appointment of district employees, such as the hiring of the superintendent of schools or school board attorney. Aye, second.
Aye, Melinda Weathers.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly affirm.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
Before me this twentieth day.
Sworn to me. This twentieth day.
Of February 2023.
Of February twenty twenty. Alright, thank you. Aye, Melinda Weathers.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly affirm.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
Subscribe and sworn to me.
Before me this twentieth day.
Sworn to me. This twentieth day.
Of February 2023.
Of February twenty twenty. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Weathers, for choosing to be a part of this board. We're super excited about that. Alright, now it's time for our election of officers. Election of chairperson first. Do we have any nominations?
I'm nominating myself, Glenn Moll.
Well, I'm gonna nominate Esther Gergari.
I move the nomination cease. Second.
Alright, so let's go ahead and make our election public. So, those who would like to elect Glenn Moll, please show a quick hand. Alright, those for Mr. Gergari, please show a quick hand. Alright, it looks like we have a chairperson. Mr. Gergari, you are our new chairperson. Do we need to make a nomination for that, or is that just done? Are you willing to accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to vote on that or no?
Yeah, you can, you can do the formal vote on that. It'd be appropriate.
Alright, so let's have a vote for Ms. Gergari being our chairperson. By the same and alike.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm gonna move it over to you then.
Well, we're going into election of chair, or co-chairperson. I would like to nominate...
If I could interject, well, I guess it really would be a vice chair, right?
It's vice chair.
So, it's co-chairperson on the, on the agenda, but it really should be vice chairperson.
Okay. I would like to make, I would like to elect, formally elect, Vice Chair Jonathan Pusky Terry. Would anyone like to make a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, so we need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I want the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Anyone want a second now, please?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Comment reserved for the public. Do we have anybody? No? Okay. Board member comments? Anyone have any comments there?
It's been a while, but in December, Ms. Congress, I said, board members play board games. It was really neat to interact with the kids, and they became leaders and showed us how to play certain board games. But it was fun being live. Thank you.
She's not here, but I saw on social media she did like the glow, the glow part. That was really cool. So, just shout out to her for being creative and innovative. I know that Olivia posted on it, about it. It was so cute. Glad, do you have any comments?
No.
Jennifer?
Just shout out to the academic team, who won their nineteenth consecutive quick recall at regionals, and will be advancing to state along with several students who will be testing, individual testing at states.
Congratulations to your daughter. Okay, superintendent.
I just, I just wanted to say quickly, Gladby, on the board, back on the board, this is official capacity, so Gladby, you're ready to serve my alma mater and my community. Without knowing that I would be selected, I will have to leave early just to put that out there. Didn't know this was on my schedule for today, but moving forward, I will be present.
Dr. Ross, do you have any?
I do have a couple. First, I want to thank Ms. Sheila Lopner for filling in today. I'm going to be public, because she did a phenomenal job. So, just kudos to her for doing so. Also, my mentor, Mr. Matt Moore, he's a student in Justin County. He's here, and I want to acknowledge him. He's, he's been a rock for me. He's helped me through a lot of tough situations this year, and I'm very grateful for his leadership and just allowing me to watch what he does, and has done well for several years. I even got to go last week in, was it last week? Last week and watch his team work together to look at positions for the, positions in spending for the future. So, it's really good, and I learn something every time I'm around, so I really appreciate him. And I also want to introduce our, our new finance director, Ms. Jennifer Wilson. So, just... We're super excited to have her on board and get her rolling, so that's about it.
Do you want to make any comments on the personnel notification?
Um, no, just as, just what's public and it's there.
Go down to reporting, staffing report. Do you have any comments about that?
Um, well, just that, are we at the board, where we look at those positions?
Yeah, I'm down to...
So, we do have some new positions, and we're trying to solidify the leadership of the board, I mean, of the, of the central office. And we initially were going to go with the format of the assistant superintendent, but after looking at what a lot of our regional school districts have done, and some different challenges that have come about, we looked at what's best for Dammel. And this is a format that we feel is strong, and we'll be able to carry out our leadership plan for years to come. I feel good about this, this process.
Does anyone have any questions about the staffing report?
And we have more information on that, Dr. Ross. We saw a diagram last week, and it's not for us now, it's for Adam.
I'd always sent you a diagram. I also sent you clarity on each position, and what each position looks like, and their, their complete job descriptions. So, they're in the, in the format, and also in the folder that I said previously.
Does anyone have any other questions on that? Does someone want to make a motion to approve the staffing report, or the new positions, as presented?
I make the motion to approve the new position of Mr. Leonard.
Second.
All in favor, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Financial audit?
We have Mr. Sparks here, and I just want to say, go on record, saying that they have went above and beyond to support our district in a time that we haven't seen three different financial directors for our district. They have stepped by us in times when we didn't have one. And I'm very grateful also to Mr. Tim LaMaster and Mr. David Holber. But this, this audit team has just went above and beyond, and you see the beautiful package that they put in front of us. And, Mr. Sparks, I just want to say publicly, thank you. Can't say thank you enough for all you've done for this district.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. I am Tom Sparks, Summers and Crayton Sparks. This was our first year working with your district and our audits, so we had to get to know you all, and your staff had to get to know us. And there was a lot of transition this year, as you all know. But we got it done, and we got to KDE, and so far, they seem satisfied with the audit. But I'm sure we'll hear something. They usually send us some comments back, but if they do, we'll have some more help through it. I want to thank Dr. Ross and Brian Dover, and I'd say Tim, and Deputy LaMaster, and the other staff were very helpful while we were on campus and also at the schools with the red lip testing. But you have before you ninety-three pages. I'm not gonna go through every page. I'm gonna hit the highlights only. You've got plenty of stuff on your agenda, but there are some things I do want to bring to your attention. The first letter in the bound copy, the very first paragraph is an auditor's opinion, and that is very important. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a technical report, which means we did not find any evidence of fraud or disappropriation of any of the assets of the district. The next paragraph you see on there, there's always new accounting standards that come down the line. And this year, there was one with a new implementation for the leases. We did have to implement that for the district, and we've now got that in your financial statements. There are more coming this next year. They always change stuff. And so, we will be glad to work with your finance officer and with that implementation. But anyway, the lease implementation had to be done this year, and it basically put a lease liability and an intangible right-to-use asset on your financial statements. So, once it's there, you gotta look at it each and every year as you add new leases to the district. Now, the next part of the audit's on page four to ten. This is the MDNA. The MDNA is a joint effort between district administration and the auditor. Most of this information is of districts. There is some audit information in there that's in a nice comparative format, and I'm gonna draw your attention to that. If you will go to page six, you'll see a net position schedule, and you'll see a 2022, 2021, and then a change column, just some highlights. Your total assets went up $1.1 million, deferred outflows, deferred inflows. Whenever you see this, this is directly related to your CERS and KTRS pensions. The state has their own actuaries and their own auditors, and they publish this information on the website. We are required to go and get that in each district, and the state of Kentucky is listed there. We get that information. It's required to be put in your audit. The total liabilities went down $6 million. Most of that was due to the pensions and your, and your, uh, OPEB monies, which OPEB is other pension employee benefits. It went down. That's unusual, but it went down this year. Um, deferred inflows, again, $3.8 million, that's a, that's directly related to your pensions. So overall, the net position of the district was up $3.5 million, which is a good sign. Anytime net position goes up, it's good. Uh, page seven is the summary of revenue and expenses. Uh, there again, you've got comparative columns, just some highlights there. Total revenues did go down $3.6 million. That's primarily directly related to state revenues. Last year, you had more state revenues, this year, you didn't have as much. And the funding with the state can be whatever it is. Total expenses, uh, went, uh, down as well, about $5 million and it was almost directly related to, uh, instruction expense. And then you have a column next there, uh, which is your, uh, food service. Now, uh, food service actually went up about $560,000. As you know, the reversal of COVID, you were able to serve more lunches. You serve more lunches, you get more federal dollars that come in to reimburse the district. So that was the, uh, the answer to the increase there. And you do, of course, when you serve more lunches, you're going to have a little more expenses. So expenses did go up. Um, on page eight, nine, uh, is another format. This is your budgetary. As you all know, you go through the budgetary process each and every year. Uh, and these financial statements are on a budgetary basis. Uh, there's, unfortunately, it's on the front and back, so you kind of turn both ways. But, uh, total revenues for the general fund, uh, went down about $100,000. Uh, total expenses went down about $200,000. This is mainly an instructional cost. And then your special revenue, this is where most of your grant monies go. And grant revenue went up $2.8 million. As you all probably, in your budgeting, ESAR. ESAR funds is every district in the state of Kentucky, like tons of ESAR monies. So that's where that money is coming from. Now that will dry up. So, you know, you have to watch out for that. And then your expenses are directly related to that, were instructional costs and they went up accordingly, because that's what most of the money was used for. Um, the next part of the audit is the notes to the financial statements. It goes from page 22 all the way to page 63. The pages in between where I just was, the MDNA really covers all of that information, but it's in a nice comparative format, that's why I skipped over that. But pages 22 to 63 are notes to the financial statements. I want to bring your attention to page 33. I talked about a new, uh, a new accounting standard that's come down the pipe. I mentioned this briefly to Brian when we were on campus. It's called subscription-based IT arrangements. Similar to your leases, they're now going to require that if you've got any of these, um, IT software type arrangements that's greater than one year, those now have to be looked at and possibly be put on your financial statements. So I've kind of looked into that with Brian to try to get that and will be glad to help with that conversion as well. Um, page 36 to 38 is just a recap of your long-term debt. Um, page 38, I just want to point out, you have $24,450,000, uh, in long-term debt bonds. Um, they will mature in the year 2037. You have some other debts in there, but that's the main, main piece of that. Uh, on page 37, I also just want to point this out, because this is new to your financial statements. You'll see, uh, page 37, intangible right to use lease liability. That's the new accounting standard that got implemented this year. This is the format for that. And we think that the new subscription IT will have a similar format in your financial statements next year. Um, on page 43 is a recap, note number six is the retirement plan. Uh, the district's, um, liability is $5.8 million. This compares to $7.90 last year. Uh, on page 51, your OPEB liability is $1.7 million. Last year, it was $4.7 million. And then, um, your OPEB, uh, the KTRS portion was $3.6 million. Uh, and last year was $4.2. So as you see, as I mentioned earlier, all those went down. Very rarely do they ever go down, but there again, this comes from the actuary. Um, on page 60, accumulated sick leave, just to point out, there's $450,000 and that gets accumulated when the teachers and various employees accumulate unpaid time. Um, I do want to draw your attention to page 62. Uh, we did have to make a prior period adj- well, actually, we had to make three prior period adjustments. Um, and I mentioned this to Jennifer, uh, or Ms. Wilson, that the capital assets did not get reconciled during the year. Uh, you know, I had a lot of transaction there, so there was a prior period adjustment required for that. And also, the taxpayer refunds that was put on the books last year did not match up to what actually got paid out for this year. So we had to make prior period adjustments to get that to match up. And then, of course, the GASB 87, which is the lease standard. So that was the three. Um, next set of part of the audit is the RSII. There again, all that information is directly related to the actuary report or directed from their report and put in your audit. Uh, page 78, excuse me, page 76 is the high school, uh, or excuse me, is all the school activity funds. And you'll see a clear breakout of where they ended up each year. And then we're required to specifically break out the high school. Now, the high school's on page 77, 78. And one of the things we look for is make sure there's no activity fund that has a deficit balance. That's a big no-no with KDE, cannot have a deficit balance. Because I mean, you borrow money from another activity if you use that. So none of your, your, uh, activity funds were in that situation. Page 79 and 80 is the schedule of federal expenditures. Uh, this is every federal grant and monies coming in for the food service and all listed there. Just want to point out, if you look at, under the ESAR funds, $3 million came in last year or was expended last year in the ESAR program. And there's still some more to be expended in the current year. Um, now, on page 83, we did have, uh, three findings, state-level findings this year. Um, and, uh, there's specific ones listed out on page 88 and 89. Uh, a lot of this had to do with publications that were not made and also there was a sin, uh, a payroll issue with some documentation. There again, with as much transition you had in your finance office, that's not surprising that those things got missed. Um, so I think, uh, current administration is on, going to be on top of that and those things will not happen in the future. Um, there were no federal program findings, which is very good. And then the last part of the audit is on page 92, 93. This is management comments. Now, the management comments are not findings, but they're items that if they don't get corrected or looked at, could elevate to a finding. So with that, um, at the board level, we had some payroll documentation issues uh, that needed to be looked at. Uh, capital assets didn't get reconciled, which we mentioned that. And then, at all the schools this year, when my staff went out, uh, or the documentation was brought in, we found that the purchase orders were not following the board policies. So, and, and they were consistent. Everyone had the same finding. But of those, I mean, all the expenditures related to the purchase orders were allowed. So that's the good news. So that's a quick summation of your audit. Uh, as I said earlier, the audit has been submitted to KDE. Uh, we were in direct con- uh, not conflict, we were in direct communication with Mr. Marshall Smith at the state, telling him the status, keeping him apprised that progress was being made. And like I say, uh, Dr. Ross and his staff were just under unknowing. Then you can't even project all that went through this district. So with the transition, so anyway, uh, we got that part done. So as soon as we get the data collection, uh, report finalized with the federal government, uh, everything will be done for the year. Any questions?
Um, if we come up with any questions further that we have not thought of right now, can we contact you?
Yes. Um, my contact information, I have given that to, uh, Dr. Ross, I've given that to, uh, Tim and I'm going to be giving it to Jennifer Wilson as well. Uh, because I told her, uh, that I have a CPA on my staff. Done school, uh, school district audits for years and is very familiar with Munis. Might be able to help her some, but she needs to get as much training as possible at the state level with Munis. Yeah. But yes, please, uh, just send me an email, I'd be glad to respond.
Do you have any comments on this report?
Well, I'm just extremely grateful and, um, and you know, I, I learned a lot from this process. Um, I know Mr. Dover and I are, um, working diligently to, uh, fix those errors and get those in line. And now we have, uh, Ms. Wilson, who does know Munis, so she's, she's solid there, so she's, she's confident. And, uh, so we're, we're looking forward to grabbing on here to learn on this. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working in the future.
Thank you.
Good, sir.
We need to go back to staffing for a minute.
Staffing?
Yeah, you have to approve all of them individually. I didn't catch it in time.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I can explain, I can briefly explain, explain each one if you want.
Yes.
You've already approved a, or one. Yeah, one. So two is the staffing formula. This is something that you approve every year and it's basically the way that we staff schools on their base allocation. It's based on the number of students. Uh, this formula's already been approved by KDE and so now it just needs your all's approval.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the 2023, 24 staffing formula as presented.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Alright, and then the next one is the staff, the actual staffing allocations. These are the allocations that we give each school council so that they can go ahead and be planning for next year. Um, they're due to each council by March 1st, so we use it during the February board meeting. Um, and you'll also see there are district positions listed as well on a separate sheet. So we're asking you to go ahead and approve these, that way we can go ahead and begin planning for, for next year.
Someone might make a motion to approve, um, the agenda as presented for the staffing allocation?
I'd say no.
And second?
I'll say no.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Alright, and then the last one, these are additional certified positions that you all are willing to hopefully get the, give to schools so that they can again start planning with these positions in mind. It's a very similar list to what you all approved last year. Um, and we call this section seven in site base allocation, so.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve the certified positions as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the certified positions as presented.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Go down to financial, uh, the financial report, financial statement. Anybody have any questions on the balance sheet or bank reconciliation? Any comments? Do you, do you guys have any comments?
I don't know.
Okay, well, do I have a motion to approve the financial report as submitted?
I make a motion that we approve the financial report as submitted.
Anyone want a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Payment of invoices. No, no, nothing special on invoice, on the invoices?
No.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion on approving the, um, the payment of invoices as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of invoices as presented.
I'll say no.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Real quickly, sorry. Superintendent's contract.
Yes, so I asked that the board, um, as we spoke in our, our work session, um, some of the positions we look to, uh, the three chiefs, I asked those individuals to work additional days and the only change on my contract is that, uh, is that I also be held to the same standard of working those additional days. So the only change on my contract is working in 242, 242 days.
Anyone have any comments on that?
It's something, we're going to amend it. You can vote on it now, but we'll probably want to come back maybe the next meeting and do a short written form.
Do you, would be, would you be better off voting on it next?
You can go on and vote now too and just correct me to prepare that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to approve as presented?
I'd say no.
Okay. Anyone a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Foil Landmark Trust.
As we move to individuals, uh.
Oh, yes. Academic Team Request For Funding. Will you put on the spot?
Sure. Uh, I, uh, I sent it to, oh, yeah, I guess I didn't send it to Miss Weathers, because, um, she's also not here anymore. Uh, so, um, I'd sent it through, site base already, just the general outline of what we were looking at for the second semester. Um, uh, the academic team this year, the high school, uh, has qualified now for state as of this past weekend, um, as well as, uh, three national championship tournaments. Uh, typically, they, we qualify for one of those, um, or one of the nationals. Um, this is the first time that we've qualified for all three of them since 2012, I think. Um, we've, uh, this, I think, is easily our best team since at least 2017 and probably longer than that. Um, so, uh, in the past, uh, uh, Danville High School has helped us pay for our hotel rooms for state and stuff there. So again, um, and the board has typically helped us out by, uh, paying for one of our nationals tournaments if we happen to qualify for one. So, uh, this funding request is for the first one of those, uh, at the end of April. Um, it's the, uh, small school national championship, so, uh, we're competing against schools that are roughly our same size. Uh, the limiting factor is, I think, 500 students or less in grades 10 through 12. Um, so, um, it's, it's one that we typically perform very strongly at. Um, we've played against a lot of those teams already this year to good results. So, uh, I, I feel really confident about how we're going to do at that tournament. Um, so just asking for, uh, help in, uh, funding that one so that we can focus our fundraising efforts on paying for the other ones that will come later in the spring.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the academic team request for funding for the one person.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the hard work they've been putting in.
Thanks.
Flooring quotes? You just take the chair, I think you're like the next few ones.
Yeah. Um, floor quotes is, I mean, it's out there through J&amp;J, Florence, uh, through KPC, so it's a vendor. I don't know. Uh, it's very much needed at Bait and at, uh, engravedly for the carpet to be replaced engravedly and also for the carpet to be replaced at Bait Middle School. It's long overdue. It's pretty self-explanatory. If anyone knows anything else that, yeah, be questions, I'll be glad to.
No, there's no questions? Anyone want to make a motion to?
Make a motion that we approve the floor room quotes for, uh, Bait Landmark and the DHS Auditorium.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Tennis court resurfacing.
Um, the tennis courts are, I don't, I don't think they've been, it's been several years since they were last resurfaced, at least eight, um, big bills and cracks. And you can tell in the, uh, quotes that, you know, it's, it's more damage than what would typically happen. You see the right-way crack repair, which is an additional $30,800. Uh, just to resurface and re-strike the quote, uh, the court is $35,770. I did speak with Jake Watson. He said, he was giving a company that does, that did the tennis courts in Somerset. I went to the website. It's, it's not, I mean, it's, I guess it's a fairly new, something that they've been doing, so. This again is also on the KPC. That's their state contract, so that's what we want to do. Move forward with, whether it's with just the resurfacing or with the additional right way crack repair.
When's the last time they did a, did a audit? Do you have an idea?
Seven, eight, eight, seven, eight, nine years it's been.
Okay, some time. Technology is now probably do it, probably last much longer.
Basically, if we, if we want to do it, it's approved, just keep it scheduled.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Good quote.
I make a motion to approve the tennis court resurfacing as, at Bates.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? Lighting quotes for engravedly, all in second.
Yes, that's one that we, it's been floating around for a while. I know that I can go out and pursue other quotes and it's, I was able to locate one other business. It was in Texas. They said they can pull us forward with the lights, but not for the labor.
Oh, boy.
So, and I still haven't heard anything back from them. But this is, it's the same company that did the first part of our upgrade for the, all the controls and everything, so. It's pretty much who's out there, so. And if we did somebody else, they would kind of, this Benson Lighting Systems to do the work. Am I correct on that, Malcolm?
How long has it been going to take? Do we know? We've just been talking about it for so long. I don't think that it's taking this long. I'm sorry.
Well, and part of it depends on availability of the lighting equipment itself.
The lighting, yeah, the lighting equipment.
Sometimes we have to wait on the equipment.
Okay. Well, anyone want to make a motion to approve?
As someone.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? Playground repair quote.
Yes, that's from the storm damage to Todd Elementary. That was a, that was this one, the delays on, it's my fault on this one. They sent it to me and it went to my junk mail. And I kept calling. He's like, I'm sending it to you. I'm sending it to you. But we filed an insurance claim on that, so it's just scheduling the repairs. They, during the storms, they broke down one of the sunshades and that's the quotes for lived and everything for all the repairs, so. And that's who installed the playground equipment is all of that. So that company is the one who installed everything the first time.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the playground repair quote. That's S M.
Do you have a second?
I'll bring it back.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? So the agenda, does everyone have time to look at that? Do I have a, a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the seventh, is that it?
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? And do we, do we have anything else to say? We got everything? Before we adjourn, I just want to make sure. Okay? Do you have a motion to adjourn, Vlad?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second then?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? Motion carries?